The Presiding Officer of today's elections will now open the ballot. Please remember that this is an official polling place and there is no electioneering inside the building. So, a few announcements. This meeting is being recorded by the Brattleboro Community Television for broadcast on Comcast and Southern Vermont Cable. You can watch the meeting on Channel 10 or online at brattlebortv.com. You all hearing me?
Yes.
Okay. The Newbrook Elementary School is selling refreshments at the back of the room to benefit their trip to Montreal, the 6th grade trip to Montreal, so if you need nourishment or sustenance, that's the go-to place. I'd like to thank the road crew for setting up today and the Incorporated Village of Newfane for opening up this beautiful hall. Please note the emergency exit, which is at the back of the room. There is another one here. We hope we don't need them. There are toilets at that end of the building, alright? John, you're going like this. John Spicer, are you hearing me? Okay. According to the orders of the day, we will recess town meeting at 9:30 for the school meeting, alright? And our entire legislative contingent to Montpelier is here and are willing to report back to us about what's going on. If you will turn to your town reports and to the inside cover, you will see that this year's report is dedicated to Greg Reckert. Is Greg here? I don't see Greg. He's not here. I'm sorry. But it is, this dedication is an acknowledgement for all the many ways that Greg has served our community for many, many years and beyond our community up and down the West River Valley. And I want you just to remember that most of our town government runs on volunteer power. So, I'd like to recognize the members of the Select Board, who, most of whom are here. The Chair, Todd Lawley, is also road crew and he is out clearing the roads so more people can come to town meeting. But I'd like to take a moment. Yeah, we can definitely... With the four members of the Board, please introduce yourselves. Just stand up with your name so everybody can... Alright, Gloria Cristelli, who is our Town Clerk, the Presiding Office, and the Presiding Officer today, is also taking minutes of the meeting. So, if you turn to page 28 of your town report, you will see a list of all the town officers who have served this last year. And if your name is on that list, I would like you to please rise. So if your name is on... Ooh, there goes one of my announcements. Alright, thank you very much for your service. And for those of you who didn't get to stand up, it's not too late. The Town of Newfane needs you. There are openings on the Planning Commission, the Development Review Board, and the Conservation Commission, and we also have a need for a grand juror and a town energy coordinator. I have more announcements later with specifics about some of these, but we need hive mind, lots of, lots of brains to help solve our community's problems and keep this a fabulous place. So, after town meeting, you can, you can help, you can sign up to serve. If you look on pages 146, 147, and 148, you will see our vital statistics for the last year. We've gained 14 future voters and we have lost 18 citizens this last year. But as you deliberate today, please remember that we are beneficiaries of those who have deliberated before us and what we do will affect those who come after us. This is our 157th town meeting. Okay? Direct democracy is a Vermont tradition. It's your meeting. It's your chance to find common ground for the common good. But we follow Robert's Rules of Order, okay? State law requires that only registered voters in the Town of Newfane can vote in today's meeting. So, would anyone who is not a registered voter in the Town of Newfane, please rise and make yourself known. Alright. Thank you, and you understand. Okay, great. But Robert's Rules, the state law forbids you from, from voting, but Robert's Rules, we can speak if we allow you to. So we can't change state law, we can amend Robert's Rules. And if there is no objection, would you like to suspend the rules to allow the administrative assistant, non-government employees of the town, and non-resident elected officials to speak at today's meeting? So I'm asking you to vote here or not vote. If there is no objection to amending our rules, so I'm asking you, is there any objection? Speak now. If there is no objection, we will allow the people aforementioned to speak at our meeting. Okay, Robert's Rules is all about procedure. They allow us to move through the business with fairness and equity. They are cumbersome. But they do allow everybody to have an equal say. I have to tell you, the single most discouraging thing I have faced as your town moderator is after a meeting when someone comes up and says, "Oh, I really wanted to say..." And then they express an opinion that was not expressed. And I apologize, I say, "I'm sorry, I didn't recognize you." And they say, "Oh, I didn't raise my hand." Alright? We need everyone's opinion, especially one that has not been vocalized yet. And it can be scary. So, after you have been recognized by the moderator, please stand, state your name. Anyone who is lined up behind that mic will get preferential treatment, okay? Address your comments to the moderator. I know this seems stilted, but there are two reasons for it. The first is that by concentrating on talking to me, you might be a little less nervous if you're not used to addressing a large group. But the other is that it helps maintain order and keeps our discourse civil, alright? Town meeting lasts just a few hours, but we will be neighbors for the entire year, alright? You don't know, someone you disagree with today on some hot issue may in fact be the person who can pull you out of a ditch tomorrow. We live in a low-density community, so it's best to maintain cordiality. Be passionate and be polite. So, I am going to turn the mic over to our delegation here. If you, we have Senators Jeanette White, Becca Belain, and our own Representative Emily Long here.
Good morning, everyone. Emily Long, your representative, also a resident of Newfane my whole life. Just wanted to say that I hope all residents of Newfane are in the same situation I am, although I love Dennis's because I hear the generator running, no power, no phone. We had a heck of a hot wind last night on the wall over where I live, so I'm hoping that it comes back soon. I have the meet, the Doyle Call, which I know all of you are familiar with. It's okay with our Town Clerk. I'll link up here on the stage along with a report I presented for all future residents of South Carolina to that. It's also online, so if you'll see the website. This year's been, started out with a real big bang up in Montpelier for especially those of us on the Education Committee, which is where I serve. We started off immediately, in fact, even before the session began, we met once to discuss the level quo part of Act 46, which is the cost of student tuition. I'm sure all of you are probably familiar that we made adjustments to that, passed those barely in time for school board meetings. Took a lot longer than we had planned to get the changes, but we worked with the Senate and came up with some, what we hope are good supports for local schools in the state of Vermont, who are all dealing with a lot of issues around Act 46.
Sure. So I'm Senator Becca Bellain, Rowell, and I was thinking as I drove here this morning. Yesterday, I was teaching 4th grade at my kid's school, a preschool school in downtown Rowell. And the 4th grade teachers had asked if I would come and just talk about my work in the Senate. Before I was in the Senate, I didn't work as a social studies teacher, so I always try to have those opportunities. And these 4th graders were great because they just cut right through the chains. They said, "Who's your boss? Who's the manager?" And we talked about it. I said, "Well, who do you think?" And they thought about it, and the way the front row raised his hand, he said, "The voters are, aren't they?" And I said, "That's exactly right." They said, "There are lots of people that will want to exert pressure on you, but in the end, we are all responsible," as the folks back home in our county. So there's a lot that I could talk about. Senator White and I both serve on two committees in the same. What I wanted to talk with you about today is one issue that I've realized in my short time up there is touching on so many issues in Port West and Luton County, and that issue is housing. I ran on economic development platform. I saw an increasing level of poverty in my neighborhood in Rowell, in my child's school. Now I have two kids in school and it's not getting any better. And so, I went with an eye to try and figure out what are those levers that we can use to try to improve the economic situation in Luton County. And what I've realized is one critical component that you might not think about is housing. That until we can handle a more affordable and appropriate housing across the county at every level, we're not going to be able to bring in the workers that we need for jobs that we pass that go unfilled. We're not going to be able to increase enrollment for our schools, and I know that's important to so many of our small towns in Luton County who want to retain local control. In order to do that, we need to bring more families here. And so, when you look at what are the impediments to increasing the housing stock in the state and in Luton County in particular, there are many, and there is not a solution. But I've been working with a House member, his name is Fred Vazir, and he's at an Addison County community. And we're trying to figure out, is there a way to remove the infrastructure upgrades from the price of a house? Because what we're finding is new builds are just too expensive for most families and certainly those young families that have been back to Vermont. So we're trying to figure out, is there a way we can have some kind of revolving loan from the state? Municipals comply with money to do those sewer and infrastructure upgrades so that when somebody goes to purchase a home, that money is not part of the cost of the home. It's a small pilot program. It looks very promising that it's going to get through the House. Hopefully, we'll be able to take it up in the Senate and something. But we're really looking to partner with the Vermont Housing and Conservation Board to get creative about how to solve this problem. So I encourage you to reach out to me if you have some ideas. Is it going to be one solution to this issue? But I will take all suggestions because it's a long haul. We need to be thinking 10, 15, 20 years out. So thank you for letting us come this morning to sit here.
Thank you. I'm Jeanette White, and it truly is an honor to be serving you in Montpelier. And every year that I'm there, it's 13 years now, which surprises me and probably surprises some of you, it gets more, it seems like more and more of an honor because every time you make a decision about something, you make somebody angry. So, I'm very appreciative of being able to...
And the longer you're in, the more people you can make angry because there's more decisions you have to make. So, after 13 years, I've probably made a lot of decisions that have angered some of you, but so be it.
I want to tell you that you are well represented by Emily in the House. She's a really hard worker and she's been there not very long. I've been there 15 years, this is her second year. But I've begun to think of her as my mentor in education because it's an area that I'm really not familiar with. And I just wanted you to know that you are well represented by Emily. I wanted to make one comment, something Deb said about speaking up at town meeting. And if any of you have an interest in town meeting, Frank Ryan has written the book called Real Democracy and it's a 30-year study of town meeting. And what he says in there is, at town meeting, and this was a quote from somebody up north, "At town meeting, stand up to be recognized, speak up to be heard, and sit down to be appreciated." So, I serve on two committees, as Becca said. I serve on Judiciary in the morning and then I serve on Government Operations in the afternoon. And in Judiciary, well, we just passed out what some of you may like and some of you may not like, which is the legalization of marijuana bill. It passed the Senate and now it goes on to the House. And I can go into more detail on that. I'm going to have a piece of the paper explaining what it really is and what it isn't. But we did pass that, that came out of Judiciary. We're also dealing with issues of kind of individual rights as they balance with the broader societal needs. And some of those are things like, when can government get stuff off your phone? Do they need a subpoena just for a court order? When do we take DNA samples from people who've been arrested? These are huge issues and they may not sound huge, but each time we make a decision, we change the balance between individual rights and societal needs. In Government Operations, we deal with elections and municipal issues, law enforcement and state employees. One of the things we're looking at this year is the issue of constables. Do you have constable in Newfane? We are looking at the issue of constables and what their power is and at law enforcement in general. In Vermont, you can only decertify a law enforcement officer for two reasons. Either they don't meet the requirements of the academy like they can't pass the physical test, or they've committed a felony. There is no other reason in Vermont that you can decertify a law enforcement officer. It's been a problem for a long time and we're looking at it this year, we still. And we're looking at an ethics panel, both an internal panel for the Senate and an external panel. And I just should say that we read that we have really bad marks from a group called Public Integrity, and there are a couple others like that. Some of it is because of the questions they ask. They ask questions of legislators, "Do you have a policy for nepotism when you're hiring your staff?" Well, no, we don't have a policy around nepotism because we have no staff. We get an F. We get an F on that because we don't have a policy. So, some of the questions that they ask, just take it with a grain of salt when you look at those grades that we give. So, I am not going to stay around here today because I've talked to some other town meetings, including my own, where I like to participate. I live in Flannigan. I like to participate in my own town meetings. But thank you for asking us here and letting us in. And when we're home, I'll be, so if you have any, maybe sit down, have a coffee and talk about something, give us a call. And do visit the State House. It is a really, really great place to come. And let us know before you come, we'll give you your own private tour and tell you how things really work. You're the boss after all, alright? Thank you. Thank you.
So, if there are questions, if anyone has a specific question, go ahead.
If you've seen something in Newfane, I'd like to thank you. Thank you very much for passing the case of state legislation. I think it was long, it took a lot of weeks.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Yeah, Dan.
Dan, we won't stop anything. The governor and the legislators, legislature have both been really piling up on schools. And some schools have just spent too much, just got to get realistic. And some of the main costs right, our school budget, health insurance, mental health issues, and poverty. And the state decided not to put in universal healthcare and a standard vision of school. And the schools have a lot of funding costs. The state has not put in serious, the reason of serious health care, the reason of serious funding goes for the same problem of the increasing poverty and increasing mental health care, you're starting to work on these costs. These are the reasons that schools are struggling to buy plan. Yet, you refuse to acknowledge that and like the government blame on the schools, and I think that's totally unfair and actually, we need to do what we're doing. Emily, you're a school person, how do I get to really get up there defending schools? Because we, the schools are really not in control of very much of what their costs are.
I agree with much of what you said, Dan. In fact, as most of you all know here in Newfane, I served and have for 22 years on school boards and I'm currently on the Lilly Gray Board. There are huge issues. The connection between human services and the education establishment, because of that, it needs to be closer clearly today. We have a report that came out, out of Act 46, about ways that both those agencies work together. It has not been a fully completed document. We got a preliminary report back because it was due in January and it wasn't really completed. It's very complex. There are a lot of issues that we need to deal with around poverty in this state. And Dan is right, the one thing that I will say, it's become very hard for me as we take testimony on almost any topic or we hear debate on any subject up there, the core issue seems to always fall back on poverty. And it is very concerning to me. So, as we augurate in our own committees and in our different chambers, I think we have to keep that as a central focus. There are other issues around school funding and a couple of them we're dealing with this year. And we're looking, currently, our committee is looking at whether there are better ways we can fund our career technical centers and deliver the services out of our career technical centers. And the other one is around, is around special education. Is there a better way to deliver special ed and is there a better way to fund it? So we're in the, we're just in the beginning stages of looking at that with the specific factors of the cost attainment mechanism of Act 46. But the last thing I'll just say about this is, our projections for enrollment in the state of Vermont for our schools is continuing to decline. This year, we anticipated we were going to boost 800 students out of our state. And we ended up losing 12 just students out of our state. It was a huge drop that was not anticipated and we're really quite worried about that. So as we move forward with our conversations in our communities, and that's happening here in our community, maybe not to the level that it is in other communities, but it's coming, because we're all talking about it in Luton Central, that is something that we need to grapple. We need to figure our way to not only do what, Becca, Jeanette were mentioning about trying to find ways to bring our local folks back into Vermont, get them to stay here, have their families here and help populate our schools again, but we also need to deal with what's happening right now, today in our system, and that is loss of educational opportunities for kids. So, those are the conversations we're having. I hope you'll continue to stay involved with your school system here because while we're doing a wonderful job here in Newfane, and in fact, with Newfane and Brookline doing their merger and having a joint school, it's made an incredible difference to both communities. That's what all other communities in the state of Vermont are looking at right now, ways to solve, find deficiencies so we can improve educational opportunities for kids because honestly, that's the most important part, I believe. We are very supportive of our school system here in Vermont and we fund them well.
Oh, I want to say that I know that I speak for all three of us up here. We are fiercely protective of our public school system. And if any school that we take connected to our schools is going to have an eye on how it's ranked in public schools. And because Emily said, there are a lot of moving parts. My kids are in the public school, I taught in the public school, I was educated in the public schools, and we want to look at the long-term health of our public schools. And as Emily said, if you're looking at trajectory for our enrollment, the structures have to change. 22,000 fewer students over the last couple decades. We anticipated 800 fewer, we got a lot more than that. We can't stick our heads in the sand, we have to see what trend is coming and make those adjustments accordingly. But I can tell you, we would never vote about an issue that came to force that was not, we felt, in the best interest of our very strong public education arm in Vermont. So, just want to make that clear.
Thank you very much. I'm sorry we could listen to you for a long time, but we have business to accomplish and you have other places you need to go. Thank you so much. Are there any first-time voters here? Okay. So most of you then just need maybe a refresher, that a motion may, must be made, seconded, and repeated before discussion can be, repeated by the moderator, before the discussion can begin. The person who makes the motion has the right to speak first, and an article can be brought to a vote in two ways. One is, I noticed that you've run out of things to say, and I ask you if you're ready to take a vote. And the other is someone is recognized and they say, "I'd like to call the question." In which case, what we do is we have to vote on whether or not we want to end debate, and it must pass by a two-thirds majority, alright? And I do remind you that just yelling out, "Call the question," doesn't work, alright? If you have a question about how to do something, ask me. That's what I'm here for. The moderator's job is to help you conduct your business. I continue to attend the annual School for Moderators and I gain experience with each year. However, Robert's Rules are many and they are not always clear. So, if you think I've ruled mistakenly or unfairly, please bring it to my attention, alright? There's a procedure to remedy it. Article 1 is by Australian ballot, and instead of going to Article 2, we are going to recess until after the school meeting, which is warned for 9:30. So, don't go away.
Good morning. It's 9:30, just about 9:30, and I'm calling the 2016 Newfane School District Meeting to Order. My name is Kim Friedman. Thank you very much for electing me as Newfane School District Moderator for this term. As you're probably aware, the majority of business related to Newbrook Elementary School takes place at the joint meeting of, can everyone hear me okay? The joint meeting of the Newfane and Brookline School Districts, which occurs before our town meeting. This year's meeting took place on February 10th. Like with town meeting, the school district meeting is also governed by Robert's Rules of Order unless we adopt a different procedure. Since Deb just reviewed most of those rules, I don't think there's a need to review them again, just know that they also apply to this meeting. However, we do need to suspend the rules to permit any non-voters to speak. So if you, if there's no objection, we'll amend the rules to permit Scotty Tabachnick, Newbrook Principal, who's not a voter of Newfane, to speak if called upon. Is there any objection? Okay, hearing no objection, then we will amend our rules in that way. The business that we're here to conduct appears on page 4 of our town report, and I'd like to give Shannon a shout-out. Thank you so much for all the work that goes into preparing this entire report. Thank you so much for all the work that goes into preparing this entire report. As noted in the warning on page four, voting on Article One, Election of Officers, takes place by Australian ballot from 9:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. today. So, we will move to Article Two to compensate the directors of the Newfane School District $200 each. Is there someone who would like to move the article as stated? Could you state your name?
I'm Scotty Tavatchnick.
And is, is there a second?
I'm second.
Did you, did you get that? So, the motion has been moved and seconded. Article Two reads, "To compensate the directors of the Newfane School District $200 each." Is there any discussion on Article Two? Are you ready to, for the question, are you ready to vote? Yes? Okay. So, the question is on the adoption of Article Two to compensate the directors of the Newfane School District $200 each. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. Or no. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes have it, and Article Two passes. Article Three, "To set the date of the annual meeting of the Newfane School District for the first Tuesday of March in the year 2017." Would someone like to move Article Three as stated? Can you state your name and town for the record? Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. The motion has been moved and seconded. Article Three reads, "To set the date of the annual meeting of the Newfane School District for the first Tuesday of March in the year 2017." Is there any discussion on Article Three? This might be a very short Newfane School District meeting. Are you ready to vote on the article?
Yes.
Yes.
Is the state mandating to have this Tuesday, first Tuesday of March?
Yeah, and my understanding is that for legal purposes, it does need to be warned and voted on, even though it does feel rather perfunctory. Okay, so are you ready to vote? Okay. The question is the adoption of Article Three to set the date of the annual meeting of the Newfane School District, what we're doing right now, for the first Tuesday of March in the year 2017, which, as Gloria points out, is Town Meeting Day. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes have it. Article Three passes. Article Four, "To transact any other business that may legally come before the meeting." Is there someone who would like to move the article? Okay. Don't we have to move and second the article before we can discuss it? Okay, so Deb has moved the article. Is there a second? Got that, Gloria? Thank you. So, the article has been moved and seconded, "To transact any other business that may legally come before the meeting." I'd like to remind everybody that the business that falls under this article is non-binding. Deb?
Deborah Luskin, Williamsville, and I'm trying to be able to speak as a citizen. Ma'am moderator, I would really like everybody to know what a wonderful school we have, okay? And the farms are school program in particular, they've got the factories we fired up, the kids fired up, you can go and get free dinner at the harvest, the harvest supermarket. The kids have a garden, they're learning science through soil studies, they are learning nutrition, they're learning biology, they are writing, they're being farmers and learning history. They are using place-based education in this phenomenal way, and it's on public schools, everybody in this room could go visit. Thank you.
As much as I would like to, I will refrain from commenting. Are there any other points or discussion, anyone like to bring up, any other business in this, related to this part of the meeting? Okay, if there is no objection, then we will adjourn the Newfane School District Meeting, and we will pick up where we left off with the town meeting. Yes? Yes?
Our esteemed school board chair would like to know if there is interest in a brief presentation, or update, I should say, on the energy project, which you all voted on last, a year ago, October. Yes, there seems to be interest, so Ken, take it away.
Okay. Do I, oh, I need to turn it on first. I need to turn it on. All right, can everybody hear me? Eh? Is it on? You can hear me? Okay. Okay, so our air-to-air heat exchangers are in, up, functional, finally. For me, it was, it took too long, but everything takes it. Can you guys hear me up there? Okay, now can everybody hear me? Okay. Sorry, I'm getting old. Used to be I didn't need this. Our air-to-air heat exchangers are in, up, functional, running. So, our heat is now all-electric, unless it gets thrashingly cold, that we need to turn on our auxiliary boilers. The SunEdison for the solar is in, finalizing negotiations right now with Green Mountain Power to get everything going there. They'll start construction this summer, should be finished by fall, and... We had all our paperwork in, in time to meet the Green Mountain allotment for the credits and the reduced price and all that. So, everything is, according to everyone else, on schedule. To me, it's still running too slow. It should have been up already. And I'd like to point out two mistakes in my letter, only because we are no longer the lowest cost per pupil in the school district. We are now the second lowest, which is due to dropping enrollment. Also, our legislators were nice enough to throw in a, on January 30th, after the letter was written, a revisary into the calculations that if you were under the state norm for per-pupil cost and spending last year, you didn't have the dollar, per-dollar penalty over, which actually, they reduced down, I believe it was 60 or 40 cents. So, that doesn't apply to us, so we're still under, where there's no penalty for that. I'd just like to point that out, that I had in here. Okay, that's it, for me.
Thank you, Ken. Are there any questions for any of the school board members about the energy project? Joyce?
I don't have a question, but just a comment that my students and I enjoy the new school.
Scotty?
I'm Scotty Tavatchnick, school principal. I just wanted to take a moment to thank Pat Mace, Mr. Pat Mace, who's our building manager. He put a lot of time and effort into prodding everyone along. It's a, it's a huge process to get this new HVAC system up and running, and I just wanted to say thank you, Pat, because we all are now reaping those benefits. It's gonna be cost savings, it's a lot cleaner, and it feels a lot better in the building. Every space is gonna be equally warm. There were some places in the building where you'd end up that would be very cold with the old system, and now, now things are really great. So, I just wanted to say thanks to Pat.
Any other discussion points, questions? I want to apologize to Luke Stafford and Ken and Tammy Mace, who are our Newfane School officers. I should have recognized them at the beginning of this meeting. I know well how much time it takes to be on the school board and to do the wonderful job that you all are doing, so I'm sorry I didn't recognize you right away. So, if there are no objections, we will adjourn the Newfane School District Meeting and resume the town meeting. Are there any objections? Okay, the Newfane School District Meeting for 2016 is officially adjourned. Thank you.
So, in addition to nourishment, the Newfane, New Brook, the New Brook School, sixth grade, is raising money for their trip to Montreal with a kiss the pig contest. Now, when Joyce Van Pamela, and this sixth-grade teacher there, explained it to me, there are pictures of some pretty handsome people there, who I thought I would get to kiss them if I put in a lot of money, or my name was picked, but it turns out, the person back there who gets the most money has to kiss the pig. So, maybe it works, you know, the other way. The people you like least, you put more money in for. I don't know, but, but do support the kids going to Montreal. It's a great event.
It's fun for people to check out who's the people.
Right, and who volunteered to, for this infamy? All right, let's get to work. Article Two. Shall the voters of the town of Newfane pay taxes for the ensuing year on a quarterly basis, due on the 15th of August, October, January, and April? The late charge for interest being at the maximum legal rate of 1% per month for the current fiscal year, and 1.5% per month for each month thereafter until paid. Is there a motion?
So, very interesting.
Thank you. It's been moved. Is there a second?
Jim, your last name?
Russell.
Russell, thank you. It's been seconded and moved. The question is, shall the voters of the town of Newfane pay taxes for the ensuing year on a quarterly basis, due on the 15th of August, October, January, and April? The late charge for interest being at the maximum legal rate of 1% per month for the current fiscal year, and 1.5% per month for each month thereafter until paid. Is there any discussion? Do you want to speak to the motion?
Just to, to the voters.
Uh, address your, address your, right.
This process has worked for us very well for the last several years, and I think it's a good idea just to continue.
Did everybody hear? Gary suggested that this has worked well for the last few years, and he thinks it should continue. Is there further discussion? Are you ready for the question? All right. An aye vote means you're in favor of the article as read, and a nay vote means you're opposed. Article Two, does everybody understand what they're voting on? Shall the voters of the town of Newfane, you're all gonna know this pretty well, shall the voters of the town of Newfane pay taxes for the ensuing year on a quarterly basis, due on the 15th of August, October, January, and April? The late charge for interest being at a maximum legal rate of 1% per month for the current fiscal year, and 1.5% per month for each month thereafter until paid. All those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying nay.
Nay.
And are there any abstentions? The ayes appear to have it. The ayes have it, and the motion passes. There is a reason for the pause. And I, it has to do with being able to reconsider a motion. I am legally bound to do that, and if anyone has reason to reconsider a motion, we can take it from there. Article Three. Shall the voters of the town of Newfane authorize the select board to sell or otherwise convey property acquired through tax sale proceedings? Is there a motion? Myra Fassler moves it, second.
Second.
Tom Bedell seconds. The motion is, shall the voters of the town of Newfane authorize the select board to sell or otherwise convey property acquired through tax sale proceedings? Is there any discussion? Hearing none? Are you ready for the vote? All right. An aye vote means you're in favor of Article Three, a no vote means you're opposed. Article Three, shall the voters of the town of Newfane authorize the select board to sell or otherwise convey property acquired through tax sale proceedings? All those in favor of this article, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes have it, and Article Three passes. Article Four. Shall the voters of the town of Newfane authorize the select, uh, we did that. Article Four. Shall the voters of the town of Newfane exempt from taxation all real property of the South Newfane Community Association Building and Land, a half acre, more or less, for a period of five years pursuant to Title 13 Vermont Statutes Annotated, Section 3840? Is there a motion? Lynn Forrest moves it. Is there a second?
Second.
Maureen Albert, say your last name.
Piatcik.
Piatcik, thank you, seconds it. The motion, Article Four as read, is now up for discussion. Is there any discussion?
Is this something new?
Is this something new? Somebody want to speak to that? Dennis?
Tom, that article is something, and the next several articles after that, they come up every five years, so if you go back five years, you would have seen the same articles.
Is there any further discussion, further questions? Yes, up in the balcony.
For longer making, Tom, does this happen for all nonprofits?
Does, the question is, does this happen for all nonprofits? Is there somebody who can answer this question? Uh, yes?
Newfane, I believe that a number of nonprofits are statutory, tax-exempt, others are discretionary, these are discretionary nonprofits. The other nonprofits that have tax exemption, church, the library, I believe, are all statutory.
So, for those who may not have heard, Richard Merrick says that some nonprofits get statutory exemption, and some get discretionary exemption, and if I understand correctly, these are discretionary, therefore, they come up for a vote. Any other comments or questions? There was another question up there? No? Yes?
Steve Green believes part of the town is, anyway, why is it five years? Why isn't it ten years?
Why is it five years and not a different period of time? Does anyone know the answer to that? Yes? We'll find out.
All right, so it says in the article that the board needs to make legislation, so if you recur to the New York State.
Can I hear you, Gloria?
Okay, I can tell you that, as the article states, Steve, it, this is according to the Vermont State Statutes, which you can find online, as I did last night. As a moderator, I can point you to it. I will not give you an opinion on it, however. Does that help? Sure. Any other questions or comments? Ready for the vote? Okay, you, an aye vote is in favor of extending tax exemption for real estate taxes to the South Newfane Community Association. A no vote, you're against that. Shall the voters of the town of Newfane exempt from taxation all real property of the South Newfane Community Association Building and Land? Newfane Community Association Building and Land, a half acre, more or less, for a period of five years pursuant to Title 32 Vermont State Statutes Annotated, Section 3840? All those in favor of the article, please indicate so by saying "aye."
Aye.
And those opposed by saying "no"? The "yes" appear to have it. The "yes" have it and Article four passes. Lynn Forrest moved it and, uh, the second?
Maureen.
Maureen, thank you. It is really important, it would be great, as informal as this is, if you would stand up and state your name. Because not only will other people get to know who you are, but it gives our clerk a little more time to get your name in the minutes and that is critical. Thank you. Article five. Shall the voters of the town of Newfane exempt from taxation all property, all real property of the New Brook Volunteer Fire Association Building and Land, one point six acres, more or less, for a period of five years pursuant to 32 VSA, Section 3840?
So moved.
Uh, thank you. Bruce moves it and Joyce seconds it. Uh, the article as read is now up for discussion. And you will notice a theme here. Is there any discussion? Ready for the vote? All those in favor will, of Article five, will indicate so by saying "aye." So Article five. Shall the voters of the town of Newfane exempt from taxation all real property of the New Brook Volunteer Fire Association Building and Land, one point six acres, more or less, for a period of five years pursuant to 32 VSA 3840? All those in favor of Article five, please indicate so by saying "aye."
Aye.
And those opposed by saying "no"? The "yes" appear to have it. The "yes" have it and Article five passes. Article six will seem familiar. Shall the voters of the town of Newfane exempt from taxation all real property of the South Newfane Williamsville Fire Department Building and Land, a quarter acre, more or less, for a period of five eight, five years pursuant to 32 VSA 3840? Is there a motion?
I'll move it, Tammy Mace.
Do you have it?
Okay.
Okay. Uh, it's been moved and Article six has been moved and seconded. To exempt from taxation all real property of the South Newfane Williamsville, uh, Fire Department Building and Land for a period of five years pursuant to 32 VSA 3840? Is there any discussion? Ready to vote? We know this drill. Okay. So, an "aye" vote is in favor of Article six and a "no" vote is in opposition. Shall the voters of the town of Newfane exempt from taxation all real property of the South Newfane Williamsville Fire Department Building and Land, a quarter acre, more or less, uh, for a period of five years pursuant to 32 VSA 3840? An "aye" vote is, uh, indicate, if you're, oh boy, I just lost it. Um, all those in favor, please, in favor of Article six, please indicate so by saying "aye."
Aye.
And those opposed by saying "no"? The "yes" appear to have it. The "yes" have it and the article passes. Article six passes. So we have one more. Let's do it with enthusiasm. Article seven. Shall the voters of the town of Newfane exempt from taxation all real property of the Williamsville School Preservation Society Building and Land, a half acre, more or less, for a period of five years pursuant to 32 VSA 3832 parentheses six? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Did you get that? Margaret Winberger moved it, second. Nancy Riga seconded. The Article seven as read is now on the floor for discussion. Is there any discussion? Yeah.
I'm Jen Weir. I serve on the board of the Williamsville School Preservation Society and we actually prepared comments today because we were concerned that we might lose our tax exemption. Um, so I'll just simply say that, uh, our operating budget is about $10,000 per year to essentially take care of things through our schoolhouse. We rent it to the Timpson Hill preschool. Uh, but in order to, uh, take on the property taxes, should that occur, it would cost us an additional $7,000, which would be waiting on who could do, uh, essentially keep operating and getting that doing. So, um, we very much would like to continue our arrangement without the tax exemption.
Did everybody hear that?
Yes.
Joan is representing the Williamsville School Preservation Society. She says it takes $10,000 a year to keep the building going. They rent it to the Timpson Hill School and that the real estate taxes would be prohibitive. I get that right? Is there any further discussion? Yes.
I have a question.
Could you please stand up and...
Okay, Margaret Winberger, Williamsville. Um, was anything ever done with the upstairs of the building? At one point, there was an effort to rent out space there.
So the question is, was there ever anything done to rent the upstairs? Joan, are you able to answer that question?
Um, for six years, the supervisory had been occupied on the second floor. Since they left, um, we've been unable to find any renters to use that space. So it's vacant.
So the space is currently vacant and, um, can you tell people here what requirements or what, what the space is and what the requirements might be for renting it? This seems like a good marketing opportunity. Uh, address your comments.
A little bit of history. The reason why the Preservation Society owns the building is that it was once owned by the town and school district. And, um, when the time came where they no longer needed the building, they wanted to sell it and the Williamsville School Preservation Society then came into existence to essentially own the building and maintain it for as long as we could. Now, if we fail to maintain the building, the, um, the deed requires that it will revert back to the town. Um, so part of the conditions of owning the building is that we'll make sure that it's used for community. Um, so renting it to Timpson Hill preschool serves that deed and so we're constantly looking for, um, anyone who is either nonprofit or serving the community to occupy the, occupy the space. The second floor is essentially set up as offices, office space. Um, so that's its best use. It can't, it can't be used for children because we have not put the necessary fire safety, which we're supposed to do there. So it only can be used by adults who were to be able to rent that.
Alright, so, did you hear that? Okay. Uh, is there any further discussion? Yeah, yes. Uh, speak, speak up.
Forrest, uh, the question is, is the full year space or is it just a non-what space? Can you answer that?
Uh, I think it's full year.
Full year space. It's a full year space, office space for community or nonprofit use, uh, by adults. Boy, that could get troublesome. Alright, is there any further discussion? Here's the question for Article seven. Shall, uh, an "aye" vote is in favor of extending tax exempt status and a "nay" vote is in opposition. Uh, shall the voters of the town of Newfane exempt from taxation all real property of the Williamsville School Preservation Society Building and Land, a half acre, more or less, for a period of five years pursuant to 32 VSA 3832 six? All those in favor of Article seven, please indicate so by saying "aye."
Aye.
And those opposed by saying "nay"? The "yes" appear to have it. The "yes" have it. The article passes. Article eight. Shall the voters of the town of Newfane appropriate the sum of $4,500 to help support the home health, maternal and child health and hospice care provided in patients' homes and in community settings by visiting nurse and hospice for Vermont and New Hampshire? This is currently in the budget. Is there a motion? Yes.
So moved.
Okay, he moves the...
I'll go next.
Yes, you make a motion.
Whatever.
He, he is trying to get Article eight on the floor. It needs a second.
Second.
Tom Bedell has seconded. Article eight as read is now a motion on the floor and open for discussion. And Gunther, since you moved it, would you like to speak?
Uh, last year, uh, they made 814 visits to 31 clients. At the same time, because of the vagaries of public care and public care, they incurred a $25,000 deficit.
Did everybody hear this?
Yeah.
Okay, you need to speak up. Uh, there, there is a microphone.
No, I don't need a microphone. I speak louder. Last year, they made 814 visits to 31 clients in Newfane and they incurred a $25,885 deficit because of non-reversal of the deed.
Is there any further discussion? Yes.
Deanna Lefterakis from Newfane. Um, I just wanted to say that my husband received hospice care through, um, this agency and it was wonderful and we couldn't have done it without them. So I highly support this article.
Thank you.
This is about, hello?
Yeah, and Carol, just...
Oh, I'm Carol Hatcher, Newfane. Um, this is an increase of about $375 over the, um, it's the first increase in seven years and the board felt it appropriate. And that's pretty much it.
Is there any further discussion? You ready for the question? Article eight. Shall the voters of the town of Newfane appropriate the sum of $4,500 to help support the home health, maternal and child health and hospice care provided in patients' homes and in community settings by visiting nurse and hospice for Vermont and New Hampshire? All those in favor of adopting Article eight, please indicate so by saying "aye."
Aye.
And those opposed by saying "no"?
No.
The "yes" appear to have it. The "yes" have it. Article eight passes. Article nine. Shall the voters of the town of Newfane vote to authorize capital fund expenditures in the amount of $503,312 as proposed in the capital needs plan for fiscal year 2017? Is there a motion?
Very good. Thank you so much.
Move, it's been moved. Is there a second?
Tim Schaefer seconded.
Tim Schaefer seconds it. The Article nine as read, authorizing, uh, capital fund expenditures in the amount of $503,312 as proposed in the capital needs plan for fiscal year 2017 is now open for discussion. Is there any discussion?
My moderator, I review to the voters. Page 19 contains the details and I believe that the slide board can supply even more information about the individual line item.
Page 19 is where you will find information about the capital, um, the, this, where you'll find this capital fund. The capital needs plan. Are there any questions? Information, discussion? Yes.
Uh, Luke Stafford, Williamsville. So on page 17, I'm looking at the capital fund expenditures here and the total, on the column, all the way to the right, $403,312.
Yes.
And then it's $503,312 on page 19 and it's in the article.
So would you like someone to try to explain that to you?
If you have that listed or what are you, what are you looking at?
So, so, um, is there someone on the board who might be able to explain the total capital fund expenditures in the proposed budget on page 17 of $403,312 versus the article and page 19 where the amount is $503,312, a difference, I believe, of $100,000? Let's just, you, do you want to explain it now that you've helped other people wonder what's going on? Great.
Only for the crowd, I prefer. Uh, the line on, uh, page 19, uh, page 19 is additions to reserves.
It's in additions to reserves. Alright. See, the beauty of the hive mind. Just works all the time. Any other discussion on this article? So, here comes the vote. An "aye" vote means you are in favor of, uh, authorizing this capital fund expenditure. Shall the voters of the town of Newfane vote to authorize capital fund expenditures in the amount of $503,312 as proposed in the capital needs plan for fiscal year 2017? All those in favor of passing Article nine, please indicate so by saying "aye."
Aye.
And those opposed by saying "no"? The "yes" appear to have it. The "yes" have it. The article, Article nine passes. Let's take a station break for some announcements. Spending money does that to me. Alright. If you have a dog, your 2016 tag is due by April 1st, 2016. It's coming right up. You can get it at the town clerk's office during regular office hours. You can mail a check and a self-addressed stamped envelope for the appropriate amount for your dog, uh, to the Newfane Town Clerk. Make, make your check out to the town of Newfane. Or you can go to the animal clinic on March 19th and get your rabies shot or have your dog get your, its rabies shot. And get your, your license at that time. So the clinic will be at the New Brook Fire Department on March 19th from 10 to 1. There will be a veterinarian there, uh, dealing out rabies shots for both cats and dogs. Uh, have fun bringing your cat. There is the one and only Williamsville Talent Show coming up on April 2nd at 7 o'clock PM. Uh, you can sign up with Annie Landenberger. Are you still here? Stand up so people can see you. Alright, that's it. Just wave, beauty show. Uh, she also has the Rock River Players playing Coffin and Hearts, endearing and enduring but true to yourself comedy, You Can't Take It With You. And that will be at the Williamsville Hall, May 5th through 8th. But sooner than that, right around the corner, later this month, the Wyndham County Historical Society's second annual soup fest and silent auction fundraiser to restore the Newfane Railroad Station will take place on Sunday, March 20th at the New Brook Firehouse. The doors open at 4:00 PM. Tickets are only $5 and the silent auction and bidding will go from 4:00 to 5:30. At 5:00, there will be soup served coming to you from 10 restaurants, one from each town along the railroad route from Brattleboro to South Londonderry. And desserts to follow. Okay? So if you want to help by donating an item, a service, or other attractive offering for the silent auction, please, Sally, is Sally here? Sally Topitzer or Laura Wallingford Bacon, who's up in the balcony? Sally? There Sally. Okay, great. Thank you. Um, I don't know if, um, two more, we'll take, we'll save them for later. We have more money coming up. Article 10. Shall the voters of the town of Newfane authorize the select board to raise... Shall the voters of the town of Newfane authorize the select board to raise the amount of $203,112 for fiscal year 2017 capital needs? Is there a motion?
Your opinion is being so moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Article 10 has been moved and seconded for the town of Newfane to authorize the select board to raise the amount of $203,112 for fiscal year 2017 capital needs. Is there discussion?
My moderator, excruciating detail begins on 19 and ends on 21.
For those who didn't do their homework, you can cram right now between pages 19 and, was that 21?
Yes.
All right, it's just two pages. Are there, is there further, are there questions? Discussion? Should we vote? Here we go. Article 10. Shall the voters of the town of Newfane authorize the select board to raise the amount of $203,112 for fiscal year 2017 capital needs? All those in favor of Article 10, please indicate so by saying "aye."
Aye.
And those opposed by saying "no"? The ayes appear to have it. The ayes have it, and Article 10 passes. Article 11. Shall the voters of the town of Newfane authorize the select board to borrow up to $180,000 for fiscal year 2017 capital needs? Is there a motion? Who's that?
Fred Bacon.
Fred Bacon moved it. Is there a second? Ken McFadden has seconded. Article 12 as read, no, Article 11, sorry. Article 11 as read is now open for discussion. Is there any? Hearing none. I'll put the question to the vote. Article 11. Shall the voters of the town of Newfane authorize the select board to borrow up to $180,000 for fiscal year 2017 capital needs? All those in favor of this article, please indicate so by saying "aye."
Aye.
And those opposed by saying "no"? Article 11 passes. The ayes appear to have it. Article 11 passes. Article 12. Shall the voters of the town of Newfane vote to raise the amount of $100,000 to be added to the capital reserve fund to be solely dedicated for future capital needs? Is there a motion? Ken McFadden moves it. Is there a second? Tom Bedell seconds it. Article 12 as read is now on the floor for discussion. Is there any? I'm sorry. Thank you. So the question is of the board, what does the board have in mind for that money? And who's going to answer that? Dennis.
Dan, on page 19, the balance in the current capital reserve is $157,000. That's as of that date, but I did check with, and that's not an exact figure. We won't know the exact figure until after the audit is done. But if you look, you'll see that we're taking 120 of that $157,000 out for needs this year. Much of it has to do with building projects that are pending, and you can see that on the following page, page 20. And then we're replenishing it with the $100,000, which will be appropriated through taxes this coming year, in the hopes that we can build that capital reserve so at times, for example, when, I think it's about four or five years until we rebuild the Arch Bridge, perhaps we'll have enough money in that reserve that we will not have to bond for it, but be able to pay for that project.
Did everybody hear that? All right. Any further discussion of Article 12? Hearing none. You ready for the vote? Shall the voters of the town of Newfane vote to raise the amount of $100,000 to be added to the capital reserve fund to be solely dedicated to future capital needs? All those in favor of Article 12, please indicate so by saying "aye."
Aye.
And those opposed by saying "no"? The ayes appear to have it. The ayes have it, and Article 12 passes. Article 13. Shall the voters of the town of Newfane authorize town and highway operational expenditures in the amount of $1,328,587? Is there a motion?
Your opinion is being so moved.
Is there a second? Gloria Costelli seconds it. Article 13. To authorize the town and highway operational expenditures in the amount of $1,328, $328,587 is now open on the floor for discussion. Is there, Gary, you have the first chance.
My moderator, tolerable detail begins on page 13 through 16, and I believe the select board can answer in these specific places.
Are there any specific questions?
I have.
Okay. Gloria has a question.
I don't have the specific page number, but I noted in going through that we are adding to just the budget $25,000 without it coming before the voters to pay the fees for mutual aid. So we spend only about $10,000 a year for our police protection, and we get approximately $6,000 or a little bit more back from fines. So we're investing in the, in our safety, in the breaking and entering, et cetera, et cetera, a whole lot less than we upped as a select board, and the voters voted it in last year from $15,000 to $20,000 for each fire department. And now we're adding another $25,000 to our expenses. Somebody maybe can find what page that's on. So I'm wondering why we're spending so little on our policing in the town, and we really do get most of that back, and so much. I absolutely know, I've never had to use the fire departments, thankfully. I know that they're very, very important, but I would have thought that might come out in the, as an article, instead of just being placed in there. Is there any response to that?
So the question, I think everybody heard, just to let you know, we're on page 13, in the middle of the page. The fiscal, the budget, the proposed budget for this year for Newbrook is $20,000, for South Newfane, Williamsville, it's $20,000, and for mutual aid, it's $25,206. So is there anyone who can answer the question on the floor?
Is there someone on the floor?
I think the board was just trying to keep expenses down as much as possible, and if you look at that page 13, you'll see the last three years, it was the same amount, and we just continued on with that amount. Hadn't really had any input from the public on a reason to increase it, so we just continued with the same amount.
I'm not sure that we're looking at the same page, because Gloria's asking, these have gone up.
I apologize, I'm looking at the wrong line.
Right, and mutual aid's gone from there to there. That's the question.
I'm looking, I'm looking at the wrong line. Wait a second. Gloria, are you asking about the mutual aid? Maybe I'm confused on your.
Was mutual aid funded for, last year?
No.
Why was it added?
Does anybody remember? I don't remember.
So the question is, why was the mutual aid budget added from 0 to $25,206?
What was the fire department actually came to us this year, and they went to the town of Brookline, too. Their mutual aid has gone up. That was an increase of, I think if it's $25,000, that's for Williamsville and Newbrook. Each one of their mutual aid had gone up, like $10,000 or whatever it was to bring it up to this amount. So instead of having to be out collecting coins on the street or selling cookies to raise this money, you know, they came to the town to see if we could help raise this by taxation, because, I mean, for one thing, the fire department does a terrific job, that and their rescue. And the less they can spend out raising it and, you know, doing the training, I think it's well worth it. So that's why that's in there. I mean, if Todd was here today, he'd go through the whole thing with you, but he couldn't be, that's what it was. They came to the meetings and asked for it.
Is there anyone here from the fire department, or maybe on the select board, who can tell us more about what mutual aid does? I mean, when they're not raising money? I think that's.
Okay, so mutual aid is the organization that fields our calls and then sends it out to, back out to our fire departments? And, yes?
Is not mutual aid also, when other departments have to respond to calls in Newfane in order to support our local fire department?
Yeah.
And the big fire, other trucks come from other areas, and that causes other trucks to move from other areas to cover those positions. And the cost of that is borne by various fire departments.
Oh, that mutual aid is, who sends out, when there's a second alarm, they send other people in the mutual part of the mutual aid, like Dummerston, Townsend, to Newfane to help out? And I imagine they also send Newfane and South Newfane, Williamsville out to help when there are fires elsewhere, since these are all small.
Mutual aid also includes rescue, and if we need to have a rescue vehicle take a person to Grace Cottage or Brattleboro, that is also involved.
So, are there further questions? This is Lynn Forrest. Go ahead.
I don't see that as a line for budget previously, so where was it before?
It's on page 13, in the middle of the page. It was, right, this is the first time it's appearing in the budget.
So previously, it was just through fundraising, is that correct, or something like that?
So previously, it was through fundraising. Yes?
Just for your information, mutual aid towers, communication towers on our property, and they have to come up periodically, sometimes quite frequently, to make repairs and upgrades when you have winds like it did last night, and through their equipment. And I know that this year, they have had to upgrade their equipment, so that they remain much more efficient operationally. It is not an inexpensive technology in order to keep all the towns, and the word "mutual" is in there for a reason, because they, we're all mutually dependent upon this organization for communication and rescue and emergency services.
Did everybody hear that? Yes, go ahead.
Annie Landenberger, Williamsville. So in reference to what Gloria was saying, I just wonder, if we were to spend more than $10 million on law enforcement, would we be able to better control areas in which speeding is a chronic problem, such as, you know, how wages, and how much was all about with the courage in that?
Somebody here want to speak to that?
Would we be able to curb problems such as speeding, which are actually detrimental to public safety?
So, so the question is, would hiring more law enforcement deter speeding, which is a public safety concern? Mike just said that we switched from the sheriff's department to.
To the state police.
State police. Take it from there.
Well, whatever. We went with the state police on it, because of one of the things with the sheriff's department, what we did ask them to do with all the break-ins that were going on, we want them to patrol the roads more, to make sure that people weren't breaking in. People sees the state police go by, or a cop, a law enforcement officer, and not so have to break into houses. And the sheriff's department pretty much said all they did was traffic violations. They don't do criminal. And the state police, they come in, and I've noticed the state police around, I think, a lot more than I did the sheriff's department. You see them off on a lot of other roads. They are pulling over people. I mean, they give out a lot of tickets, and I just think we're better protected by them.
No, it's the same as what we was paying the sheriff's department. Yes, it's just above what we were talking about, is on page 13, about a third of the way down. $10,000.
But if they also come in here for anything like domestics and stuff like that, that doesn't come out of that $10,000 that we do pay them, they said.
So law enforcement, the state police, or local law enforcement?
That $10,000 is going to the state police.
So where's our local law enforcement?
We don't have other, that's the only police we have. Yes?
It was a few years ago that the sheriff's department did tell, tell the Newfane, they're being wrong, that if we used them, we could not use the state police also. We have to choose one or the other. We can't have both. We went to see the sheriff's department, and we saw what they were doing, and then the fines weren't as great as they were previously, traditional fines that we're receiving. So this year, we're giving the state police a try. But it's going to go back and forth every year, because it's all about, you know, traffic control. We need more patrol, that's what.
Any other comment? Yes?
First of all, thank you for a very good budget, and I appreciate the notes that explain the differences from year to year. I'd like to make a motion to amend the budget to $1,338,987 to reflect municipal support for early education services in the amount of $1,900, and Vermont Adult Learning in the amount of $500.
Yeah, we need them one more time. I've got $1,900 for early education services and $500 for Vermont Adult Learning, and.
Which if I'm not mistaken, bring the total budget to $1,338,987.
One more time.
So I would check my math.
Okay.
$2,400 increase. $1,900 of going to earlier, for early education services, $500 for Vermont Adult Learning.
We're just going to take a minute and do a little, we are going to check that, just make sure we've got it right.
I'm looking at the bottom, page 15. Second line item on the bottom, and then, am I going to work?
No.
And then on page 16, about halfway down, Vermont Adult Learning.
Second motion.
This is an amendment to the motion. We'll get there in just a second. Okay, good math. So this is an amendment. This is the way an amendment works, all right? Just because some people haven't done it for a year, we forget. We've got the article on the floor, which is, we're on Article 13, which. which has been moved and seconded for operational expenditures of $1,328,587. It is now, there is now an amendment on the floor to add $2,400 to that amount, which would bring it up to $1,330,987. The, um, it, and the money is specifically allocated for services you'll find on page 15, uh, to add $1,900 to early educational services. Is that, is that right, 15? Yes. You'll see at, it's the second to last line item on page 15. And Vermont Adult Education must be on the next page, which would be paid. Uh, Vermont Adult Learning is halfway down for $500 on page 16. All right, so the, um, the amendment has been moved. I believe it's already been seconded by Tim Schaefer. And we are now have this discussion on the floor. As the mover, you can speak first.
Uh, as Representative Vaughn pointed out at the beginning of our meeting, poverty is a factor that's affecting all of our lives. And in my opinion, both personal and professional, paying attention to the supports and services that our youngest children are receiving and their families, and ensuring that there is a multiple pathways to education. I think it's really important that we support in what I consider in the scope of things to be relatively small amounts, to support early education services, which I am very familiar with, Vermont Adult Learning. Um, and I, I understand that in past years, there's been some concern about adding money for nonprofits that didn't meet the deadline, um, at town meeting. However, having worked in the nonprofit sector for 30 years, I know that folks are really, really stressed. Staff at nonprofits are very, very stressed and it is very difficult to keep track. Some organizations have small staffs and I think it's very reasonable and understandable that some of them may have missed the deadline or, um, for whatever reason, not been able to get the free work. So I would hate to see them penalized for that reason when I know for a fact that both organizations are extremely effective in what they do. And as I said, I think that they're, they employ strategies that are very important to combating significant levels of poverty in the county.
Yes, uh, Mr.?
I'm Dr. Johnson, Newthing. I've got a statement and a question. About three years ago, from the floor, $500 was added in the budget because Townsend Food Show failed to get in their request on time in the passing amendments. So there is precedent to do this. The question I have is, can, is this coming from you because you feel this is important? Or is it coming from them because they have absolutely either, which? Is this your support for them or are they asking at the time?
Right, and you can answer the question.
Okay, um, I was not asked by either organization to make this motion at town meeting. I'm not sure that gets into your question.
That's my question.
Okay, um, I, however, I know that, um, especially in the case of early education services, they would be, uh, I'm sure that they're very frustrated that they did not make the deadlines. Um, because $1,900 goes a very long way. I do not know staff at Vermont.
Excuse me, you have to, you can answer the question, but other people want to speak and...
I'm just trying to answer Dr. Johnson fairly, but I think it's not...
I, I think you did answer his question and there are more people who want to speak.
Pat Halloran, uh, Newthing, these are wonderful resources for our community. And I respect Kim's point about a deadline, that there is a deadline. As a board member for the Thompson Hill Preschool, I suggest we put our requests into the, to the board tomorrow for the 2017 budget. So we meet the deadline.
Yes, go ahead.
Good for us, South Newthing. Now, I have a question, just clarification. Um, at the bottom of page 15, it says, there's two little asterisks next to Rattleboro area drop-in center. And if you go to page 16, it says, quote, Rattleboro area drop-in center and Morningside Shutterburg, two counties combined, two foreign languages, collaborative in 2015. Uh, back through again on page 16 is from the rescue, no, I'm sorry, it says, Morningside Shutter, 500, it says, uh, zero. So those two organizations are together and where both are funded at zero level?
Yes, we are actually discussing the amendment at this point.
It's $500 for...
For $500 for Vermont Adult Learning, not for... It's, it's for Vermont Adult Learning. There's, the amendment is for $1,900 to early education services and $500 to Vermont Adult Learning. That is what's under discussion at this time. And is there more discussion? Is there anybody else who wants to speak to this? Does there anybody on the board who wants to explain anything about how you, how you vet appeals?
Hi, Carol Hatcher, and yes, um, I absolutely, at one point many decades ago, I used to work for early education services. And I would like to know, they are not here. Is any representative from the ES here today? Because one of the questions I would like to know is how many of their services do they provide to children and families in Newthing? That's maybe my first question. Can you answer that?
Um, Margaret Winberg from Williamsville. I'm not from early education services, but I would like to just speak, I, I am a guardian at Midam, serving the county. And, um, I can tell you that the number of cases of children and families in distress requiring these services, both for adult ed, which can, um, help a lot of high school age people who have not been able to cope with school for a variety of reasons. The number of cases is just through the roof, um, in part mainly because of poverty and its ramifications and also because of the opiate problem that we have. A lot of parents are not able to be parents. And, um, I just can't say enough how much any funding for early education and any kind of education is needed, so.
I agree with you totally, but, um, we did have a deadline and we were hoping that they would come forward. And we could have talked to them and asked questions of them and, uh, that was important to us. Um, no one came forward and we were left with the option that the deadline was not met. We were hoping that somebody would come today and, uh, state of the case and, uh, put it out to the lawyers. I'm thankful that, uh, some people have, but it's not actually from the people who are requesting it.
To the amendment, yeah.
I, I would say to vote in favor of the amendment. The children are not here to speak for themselves. And I think we need to speak for the children.
Yes?
Thank you, Anna, South Newthing. I just want to ask, is the only reason this money isn't in the proposed budget because they didn't meet the deadline? And if that is the only reason, um, would we support it? That was in the past. And if there was another reason why it was not going, would we support that?
Is, is there someone on the board who wants to answer that question?
I think it wasn't just that they didn't meet the deadline, it was also that no representative came and approached us and requested funds and that there's no representation here today. And I think, you know, the board spends a lot of time every year putting these places together. And there's ample time for people to get their requests and there just comes a time when it's too late. And it's my opinion that we ought to, we ought to just...
Are there any other comments? Yes?
Yes, it's Stephanie LeRue, Newthing. Thank you, Kim, for recognizing. It's important that both the organizations, flight, not community, have been familiar with the, their activities and believe they are very important. And I'm moderator. Is there a third way that maybe they can be penalized for missing the deadline? But we could still edit it from the services.
I'm, if, if, I'm not aware of anything we can do but vote on this amendment, which can be amended one, one more time, or I, it's up, it's up to the voters to either accept the amendment or not, or amend the amendment or not. Um, and, uh, under other business, it would be possible to, um, to contact, I don't know, I, someone to contact, these two organizations and as, um, Pat suggested, ask them to make their, donate their, their requests tomorrow. Tomorrow. Um, for next year so that they don't miss it, but I think that's it. So, does that answer your question? Uh, there are other people who have not been recognized once and, and we're going to do that first.
Tom Dell, I suggest we wrap the knuckles fairly once we pass the amendment and I'd like to move the question up.
So the question has been called, so which would end debate, but we have to vote on that, all debate ends. We have to pass. So, um, what happens, oh, I need a second.
Second.
It's second. So now, we're going to vote on whether to stop debate, okay? Does everybody understand that? That's all we're voting on right now, is to stop debate. Um, we're going to try to have a voice vote. It has to be by two-thirds, so. Let's see, how good my hearing is. All those in favor of ending debate on the amendment, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no?
No.
I would say that's two, two-thirds. And, uh, we will end debate on the amendment, which means we will now vote on the amendment. You can vote aye, means you're in favor of amending the article to read $1,338,987, adding $1,900 for early education service, services and $500 for Vermont Adult Learning. Or you can vote no. It would, and, and if it, if you vote yes, then we will vote again on the entire amount. Then, then the, this article, which number I've forgotten, um, Article 13 will, will be, we will vote on that again. We will vote on it with a new amount. If it, if it fails, then the amount that's there stays unless somebody else proposes another amendment. Does everybody understand what we're doing now? We're voting on the amendment. So, and aye vote means you're in favor. All those in favor of amending article, of the amendment, Article 13, to increase Article 13 by $2,400, with $1,900 going to early education services and $500 going to Vermont Adult Learning, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no?
No.
The ayes appear to have it. The ayes have it and the amended passes. So now we go back to Article 13 as amended. Article 13 now reads, shall the voters from the town of Newthing authorize town and highway operational expenditures in the amount of $1,330, $330,987, with $1,900 going to early education services and $500 going to Vermont Adult Learning? Is there further discussion? Yes?
Tom Dell, just a question, uh, maybe if you're less undercurrented, the line that $180,000 figure on page...
Article, okay.
Uh, highway equipment from $20,000 to $180,000. I assume that's for the 2009 skirt on the hill, seven, five hundred feet. But I was curious, would that have been a $180,000 for a new truck?
Um...
New truck, new new truck?
It's, it's the purchase of a new truck and, and, um, I would, we, we finished with that business. We're going to make it relevant to the current vision.
Because we're on the highways.
Uh-huh. Oh, okay, all right. We're on Article 13 as amended. Is there further discussion? Yes?
Um, Tamara, from Williamsville, I have a question. I wanted to go back to the mutual aid dues that are on page 13.
Um, with, yeah, they're, they are not part of what's on the floor right now. Um, I, I, and if you think they are, oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. They are, they are, I'm sorry. Please continue. Yeah, so what's your question?
Uh, my question was, it was mentioned that part of that $25,000 that's, um, well, I'm sorry, the $25,000, if you want to be, $25,206, if you want to be exact, that, um, that part of that is, uh, for rescue services, for the ambulance. But I think there's a separate line item on page 16 that also, that's the index for $46,000 or $47,000. And I'm just wanting to try to understand what exactly the town's, what our residents are actually getting for the $24,000 that we're paying for mutual aid. And, and then I guess I wanted to know if the select board could just let us know if they have thought of other ways of getting that money for mutual aid besides adding it to the budget that we have to pay.
All right, did everybody hear the question? All right, and can you have the answer? Um, Maurice?
Mary. Mary, Ellen, and I don't have an exact answer to you, but what I would like to say at this point is that, um... I'd like to say at this point that sitting up here for the first time ever and looking out and seeing some of the people that I personally know or have gotten to know, who've been on select board, um, that we started working on the budget in November and they were not worked on, on select board meetings. They were warned as extra, separate budget meetings. And we had meetings, I think at least six budget meetings that ran from either one and a half hours to towards the end, almost three hours. And first of all, Shannon Metcalfe, Town Administrator Assistant, was incredible support to us. And I can't even imagine how, when I started this, how was I going to make decisions about budgets? I've never done this before, but with her guidance and everybody else's support, we really, um, worked very hard on this. And the bottom line is, is that these are open meetings. They are warned. We have asked everybody to please come to meetings, not just to agree with us, but to disagree with us, to ask questions like we're doing now. But now everything has been written in stone here. It's not that we can't change it and perhaps we can, but that's what those meetings are for. And, um, as I've said during the year, looking into the camera wall and inviting people to come to our regular select board meetings, I really invite you all to come to the budget meetings. It's not fun, but, um, we work very, very well together. We've had a really great team all year long. And, you know, you all have valid questions and concerns, but there are such things as deadlines. We have to finish this by, um, December 31st. And that's it. Thank you.
Yeah, Dick Merrick, Newthing. Uh, let me try to bring some clarification to what mutual aid is. Mutual aid is the dispatch service that serves all of the fire... Mutual aid is the dispatch service that serves all of the fire departments, rescue, the ambulance service for much of southern Vermont and parts of New Hampshire. So that is a discreet service. It does serve, I believe, the ambulance service as well as Newbrook Rescue, as well as the fire departments. So it is the entity that when you call 911 for any of those services, ultimately, they are the ones who maintain, and as Bucky said, they maintain the towers, the dispatch. They have, my understanding is, having done on Newbrook, at least for some period of time, they have billed each of the departments and services that they provide that service to for that service. So the departments have been getting bills for that for a number of years. The reason it doesn't show up in previous town budgets is the departments have been paying that directly through their fundraising. So what they've done, as that burden has become an increasing one, and as they're trying to fund other things like buying equipment and other things that they need, they basically, I believe, come to the town and said, would you please pick that up for us? So that's why it's showing up in this budget. So I hope that helps answer it.
Does that answer your question? Yes. Just a second. Does that answer?
Yes, that answered the first one. The second question was, are there other ways to explore how that expense could be picked up other than through the tax, the taxes in the budget?
All right.
Besides, you know, is that full amount for fundraising, was that full amount that's just being raised by funds? Or are there other options discussed about how to raise that?
Is there anyone who can answer that question?
And thank you very much, like, I wouldn't worry about this, I'm not going to be a problem. I appreciate it.
Tamara, I'm sure that there are many other ways to raise funds and to fundraise to cover
some of these expenses, and I know personally, just from being on the board, that the fire department, our wonderful fire departments, do actually knock themselves out or have in the past fundraising. Giving them, putting some of that fundraising, taking that burden off of them, gives us an opportunity for them to train. They train our youth on how to climb mountains and rescue people. We just recently had our whole road crew go through a flagman's training so that during an emergency, they're certified, trained to be flagmen. This frees the fire departments up to actually move over and spend some of their time in preparing, you know, the rescue people to serve us better if we chip in a little bit so that they cover their fundraising costs and time that they spend on that. That was what we talked about and decided that that would serve our citizens better. So that was that.
Thank you.
All right, yes, ma'am.
Mutual aid, if you could have seen the house on our roads that burned to the ground. Newbrook was wonderful, but they couldn't handle this because of the dry and tough terrain. There were 26 firecocks on our roads. Believe it, I'm very old lady, it was very crowded, but they had to go through the woods, spray everything, everything was starting to burn, including, it could have spread to our neighbor's houses and to our house, and wood gone up to the school. Mutual aid is so important, I've never seen anything like it. So we're very grateful that we have mutual aid in this town.
Is there any further discussion on Article 13? Yes.
Tamara, thank you so much for your work. I just have a question. When we see winter like we're seeing right now with very little snow, and let's say we don't have a bad mud season, do we see significant cost savings on the dry sand and labor, and what happens with that savings?
Oh, I think when they budget, they budget, you know, for a certain amount, and, you know, they try not to overspend it. And I think what they've done in the last few years, when we've had these hard winters, they've gone over budget, actually. So, but I mean, as far as the roads and gravel and stuff like that, they use X amount no matter what. I mean, the overtime stuff's down by a savings, but you know, when you figure your budget, you can't really figure how much overtime you're going to have, so I mean, it does run over in the winter. So I mean, as far as really seeing a real savings, I don't know if there is, you know, when they're all at the end of the game, you know? We try not to overbudget anyways.
Is there any further discussion on Article 13 as amended?
Right here.
Just a second, just a second. No, just, excuse me. I'm actually going to, now, somebody who hasn't spoken to this article yet.
Maureen, I'm afraid I'm, I pay the bills for all those expenses, and even though it hasn't been snowing winter, we've had a lot of ice. The cream is out there, there's still a lot of overtime. It happens during weekends, and at nighttime is where it freezes, and the dirt roads are so bad, all the ice comes up when it rains. So they're out there, and we're still using saw for it, and certain times for plowing too, even if it's just two, three inches of snow, it's still getting done. So, you know, the overtime, if we need a budget like that, because even though this year is, we can't predict the years gone by, but sometimes we do have some left over, you know, but a lot of times we don't, because they're still out there, there's still a lot of work to do.
Is there? Um, yeah. Okay.
I think Luke, Luke, just to clarify a little bit on your question. At the end of each year, after the board is committed, board of the town, Maureen will be able to tell us whether we have a surplus or a deficit. We don't know what that is if it's done because the final board figures aren't there. Once that's in, we know that figure, then following year, we can adjust and make a decision. We do a budget meeting, sometimes it's a tax relief, sometimes it's an pending project, like the orange board may choose to use that one. So that's where that sort of thing.
Is there anyone who has not spoken to Article 13 as amended who would like to speak?
I'd like to follow the question.
I'd like to acknowledge Ken McFadden, who moves to call the question. Is there a second? We're going to vote on the amended Article 13, all right? An aye vote is in favor of Article 13. As amended, the number is not as printed in your book. The number would be $1,330,987. Does everybody understand that?
We all vote for the question.
I'm sorry. Thank you. We'll vote to call the question. Thank you very much. Question's been called, seconded, and now we've got to vote, okay? So those in favor of ending debate on Article 13, will please do so by, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no.
No.
The ayes appear to have it. The ayes have it. Debate on Article 13 is now over. We're going to vote on Article 13 as amended so that it reads, the number at the end of the question should read $1,330,987. Everybody understand what you're voting on? Okay. An aye vote is in favor of the amended amendment, a no vote is against the amendment. Shall the voters of the Town of Newfane authorize town and highway operational expenditures in the amount of $1,330,987? All those in favor of Article 13 as amended, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes have it. Article 13 as amended passes. Article 14, to transact any other business that may legally come before the town. And I'd like to take this opportunity to read a few more announcements. Are you waving to me? Can I make my announcement first? The nonprofit West River Community Project is pleased to announce that a sweet new community kitchen is opening in the basement of the West Townsend Country Store. Thanks to numerous volunteers and an initial grant from the USDA, the small kitchen will be available for households, community organizations, and small food businesses to process local produce and learn about all things food. If you haven't checked out everything that is happening right up the road, stop by the store one day soon, or see Sally, Nancy Stefanik, who's right here and can answer questions about this new opportunity. And so Article 14, I just remind you, we can take no binding business, but this is a chance for you to bring up other business. Dan DeWolff.
Dan DeWolff, okay. Right now, the state has some controversy about whether or not the state of Vermont should continue to invest in our funds in the coal and fossil fuels industry. So I would like to propose a non-binding motion that the Town of Newfane supports a governor's initiative to ask the state treasurer to divest from coal and fossil fuel stocks.
All right, so we'll make that into a motion, a non-binding motion. Shall the voters of the Town of Newfane instruct our legislators in Montpelier to divest state funds from coal and fossil fuel investments? It's been moved, is there a second? I need somebody, a second. Kim Friedman seconds it. Are you, is the, it has been moved and seconded to instruct for the town, the voters of the Town of Newfane to instruct the legislator, our legislators in Montpelier, yes, no?
Running for legislature, the motion is, does the Town of Newfane support, or the Town of Newfane support the current initiative to divest state funds from fossil fuel and coal stocks? It's not in the hands of the legislature, it's in the hands of the district.
Okay, so, Gloria, do you have it? We need to get it in red into the minutes, so let's go through it. Everybody, hold on, we're going to get this so we can vote on it. We discuss it first and then vote.
Shall the Town of Newfane support the efforts to divest Vermont funds from coal and fossil fuel investments?
Okay, I'd like to just make that, so the voters of the Town of Newfane vote to divest Vermont funds from coal and fossil fuel investments. Yeah. Do you have it? Okay, and we have it, seconded, you seconded it as that. So it's been moved and seconded. I'll repeat it. Shall the voters of the Town of Newfane vote to divest Vermont funds from coal and fossil fuels? Is there discussion? And the person who makes the motion gets to speak first, and then you can do, okay?
I would just say, you know, in a discussion, the state treasurer says her responsibility is only about dollars and cents, and to me, as a citizen of the planet, that makes no sense whatsoever. You know, the treasurer is not, she would not dream of investing in waste in slates. She wouldn't invest in blood diamonds, but she's investing in destroying the planet through climate change. And she's doing some of my major retirement funds to do it, which she is not, to my finger, and I pull teachers at the school every time, anybody that wants to have their money invested in this purpose. I think the town, the state treasurer, and representing the people of Vermont, the people of Vermont are not simply dollars and cents, the people of Vermont have a fiduciary interest in getting our money's worth, and we also have an interest in being citizens of the planet. I think we make that clear every year by the decisions we make, both in town meetings and in the legislature. So I think it would behoove us to vote to continue that tradition, to say, we care more about only pennies. We care about the well-being of our planet, and to divest in something which destroys the planet is not a long-term fiduciary responsibility, it's actually fairly reckless.
Yes.
When you're talking about funds, you're talking about retirement funds?
Can you tell the clerk your name?
James Russell.
And James, question is, are you, when you're talking about funds, are you talking about?
Retirement.
Retirement funds.
Are you talking about state general funds?
Or state general funds? You know, there's a microphone right in front of you.
I'm trying to use my voice.
Yeah, please, I can, so, please, please say your question into the mic, you got it pretty close.
Funds, if you're talking about, is it retirement funds or state funds, general funds, tax dividends? Is it two different things?
All right. So can you answer that question?
I know at least in part it's retirement funds. I also know that it's a fairly small amount, because the big argument is like, $1.6 million, which in the scheme of things is a pretty small amount. So I cannot say it includes general funds, also, but I know that it includes retirement funds, teacher retirement, and civil servant retirement.
So answer your question.
Yes, my question is, retirement funds, then, should be to members that are part of that fund?
I'm sorry, I still didn't, I don't know if other people heard you, the last part of what you said.
If you're talking retirement funds, should be for the members of retirement to vote whether to divest or not. It has nothing to do with any of that, it has something to do with, is it a retirement question?
Thank you. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. This is a non-binding vote. All right, it will be recorded, and an aye vote is in favor of divesting Vermont funds from coal and fossil fuels, and a no vote opposes it. So, shall the voters of the Town of Newfane vote to divest Vermont funds from coal and fossil fuels? All those in favor of this article, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no.
No.
The ayes appear to have it. The ayes have it, and this non-binding vote passes. Is there, is there other non-binding business?
I'm going to use the microphone.
Please, thank you.
I'm a good citizen.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Margaret Wimberger again, from, I'm still Margaret Wimberger from Williamsville. I just wanted to make a plug to anyone who has even a bit of time in their life for the Guardian-Adelaide program, which I've been a part of for a couple of years. For those of you who don't know what it is, it's a volunteer position as an advocate for juveniles, from newborns to 18-year-olds and up, who come into the court system, usually because it's a DCF case. Sometimes it's delinquency or truancy. The number of cases just goes up and up, I believe, because of the opiate addiction problem. It's incredibly rewarding work, and if you were to take it up, you can take as few or as many cases as you want. Many retirees do it and have a full caseload. I'm a working person, and I take a few cases at a time. If you're at all interested, we need you and we want you, and I will take anyone out to lunch at the restaurant of their choice to talk about it, if they want to, as long as it's not TJ Buckley's. Okay, thanks.
Very good. Thank you.
If my wife were here, I know that she would make her annual expression of appreciation to and for the town highway route, so behalf of her, I would.
Guards, council district in New Fane, I have put together a sheet, some of you may already know that we have started the townwide appraisal, which will not be done until 2017, but there's a sheet up there on the stage that gives you an outline of how the process is going to work. They've started on one map, which is map D, gathering information, I'm not sure which map they'll go to next, but pick up one of these so that you know what the process is and how it's going to proceed. If you have any questions, ask the listener. I have another announcement I've overlooked. The Planning Commission, which works with the Development Review Board to create zoning bylaws based on the town plan, is in need of some new members. They are currently working to update the town plan and have received an $8,000 grant from the municipal, a municipal planning grant, I don't know who it's from, but they got the money, and it's specifically from working on village center designation. So this will include onsite, community, and educational events, and they'll be taking place over the next 12 to 14 months. However, due to expiring appointments, the Planning Commission does no longer, or not currently, they don't have sufficient membership to satisfy Vermont open meeting laws. And so they can't move forward with this grant unless they get more people to help. So they need at least three more people to work, to continue with this work, and the current Planning Commission members who are here, Lynn Forrest and Tim, of course. So I'm wondering if one of you would talk a little bit about what this village designation, center designation is and what the grant is? Tell people, so maybe you can snatch a few?
First, I want to talk, I want to thank Pat Weisbruch for her time as a Planning Commission member. Her term is expiring, so I want to say thank you very much for your time serving the town. Village center designation is something that the state of Vermont has developed to help energize and do some economic development for towns and for the villages within the towns. Honestly, we're still working on what are all the benefits. I know there are tax credits for businesses. I know that if there's a village center designation and town-owned property needed to be rehabbed and they were going for state money, if they have the village center designation, they go to the top of the list as opposed to the bottom of the list. There are those kinds of ideas that are going on. We don't know, really, if the people in New Fane want to have village center designation, we don't know. And part of our process will be to find that out and to educate people and to provide the information so people can let us know, so that the Planning Commission then can make a recommendation to the Select Board. So that's our process. But as you said, Deb, there's only two of us right now, and we really need to have a really working commission. We need to have five members, and the members are appointed by the Select Board. So the process would be to let the Select Board members know that you're interested, to let us know. Our next meeting will be the second Tuesday, so not today, next Tuesday will be, our meeting will have some discussion, but we, at this point, I don't believe we'll be able to do any legal business because we don't have a quorum, we don't have the correct number of members, unless the Select Board gives us some by next Tuesday. So you can let Shannon, administrative assistant, know that you're interested, she will pass that information to the Select Board and to us, and the Select Board, and then we serve at the favor of the Select Board and the people of town. Questions? It's not as boring as it sounds.
And Lynn, if I'm correct, this will include the village of New Fane, which is an incorporated village, and the two unincorporated villages of Williamsville and South New Fane?
Absolutely. And it could be a situation, say, people in South New Fane wanted to have village center designation and the village here didn't, or Williamsville didn't, and New Fane Village did. It's a process that was begun with Windham Regional Commission. After Irene, a lot of the work was done at that point with maps and figuring out kind of what the boundaries were of all the different areas. That's going to be revisited. Our plan is to have a representative from the state of Vermont, Richard Amore, will come down and walk the villages with anybody who's interested, and we can discuss where the boundaries of the village center designation is, which isn't necessarily the exact same thing as the incorporated village that you're just, you pointed out.
That's New Fane only, right.
Exactly.
Yes?
Pat Weisbruch, New Fane, and if you don't mind, I'd like to give the 30,000 or 50,000-foot view of what this whole process is about. I'm kind of a big-picture person and the details sort of escape me, but in this whole process and getting this municipal planning grant, we have to revise the town plan, and we have to revise the town plan every five years. Our town plan is expiring in 18, so that just gives us about two and a half years to revise the town plan to get village center designation into the town plan. And doing that revision is going to take a lot, a lot of effort to make these revisions. So what we had envisioned, and Tristum Johnson so eloquently spoke to last year at this time, was the whole concept of getting all sorts of people involved from South New Fane and Williamsville and New Fane, and have a lot of public input. Because personally, I feel that we're at a pivotal point in our history. If you look at Windham Regional's demographics, the only two demographic groups that are increasing are 45 to 54 and, which were the groups, 45 to 64 and 64 up, and both of those groups were increasing from 2000 to 2010, 24 and 51 percent respectively. In other words, we're getting old, in case you hadn't noticed just by looking at me. So I think that we really need to have a vision of where this town is going to go, and that's going to be part of the town plan. And then, once the village center designation is in that town plan, all the things that Lynn just spoke to are the details of what needs to be done to get a village center designation and what the benefits are. So we have a lot of work ahead of us. Right now, we're supposed to be a five-member commission. We only had three members, and if one of us doesn't make it, well, no quorum, no meeting. So it would be great to get five members, but because there's so much work to do, and I think it's going to be very interesting work, it would be great to even increase that number. So, anyway.
Thank you, Pat. Thank you. The other issue within that five-year that I know we're all interested in is flood resiliency. And so that will be a subtopic, but in general, during these communications of community involvement, we will be trying to ascertain and get feedback from people, what they see New Fane to be in five years, 10 years, 15 years, 20 years, and try to get that into our town plan. So if this seems like something you're interested in, stop by and have a conversation and see if it works. Pick up a copy of the town plan and, I won't say take it to bed, I'll say read it first thing in the morning with your coffee. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there, yeah?
Gloria Cristelli, New Fane. I've been putting down several different things for us to consider. I saw a 250th anniversary for Dummerston that's coming up. New Fane's will be in 2024, and I'm not sure that that's that far ahead, that we might want to consider getting a committee started, so that if you come in the office, you will see some of our old books from the bicentennial, and we might want to get something like that going again, but it's going to take, back into planning, it's going to take planning, and it's going to take budgeting. Just a thought, because 2024 is not that far away, it gives about, what, nine years to get us going on that. And then, I just need to ask if anybody might consider bringing in a high-intensity lamp for voting and all of the work that we have to do this evening. I would invite all of you to come back about 5:30 or 6 o'clock and see that none of this lighting in Union Hall is adequate for those of us who have to write names, check numbers, and do anything. So that, you know, we have heat here in Union Hall, but that takes us to next year's town meeting. And last year at town meeting in Williamsville, I was not presiding officer, Doris was, but when you have one individual who needs to be there at least 14 or 15 hours, and the hottest it got in Williamsville Hall was maybe 55. So I would, I would encourage anybody to consider allowing the Board of Civil Authority, because it's under the umbrella of the Board of Civil Authority, to be able to change the venue. Or please ask to be presiding officer, because I don't need to catch pneumonia. Love this hall in this brightness, but come back at 6, you're not going to be able to see anything. I will even have to put lights in the voting booth, you wouldn't be able to see that. And then the lack of heat, though I understand there's been some insulation at Williamsville Hall. Not even asking for a motion, just something to be aware of. And I want to congratulate Deb Luskin for an award that she received from the social, and can you tell what that?
The Community Justice Network of Vermont.
Okay, so she just received an award from Community Justice of Vermont. And this just goes back to, goes back to the budget, but I'm not going to say too much about it, but we will have an additional two elections, one in August and one in November. And postage, it will cost about a dollar a ballot for me to mail. So in today's counting, we're going to have over 200 and, I'm going to say 50 ballots. What do we have, 121, and somebody else can do that. So when I spend that much money, we need the postage here, and I didn't, I saw that postage actually was lowered in terms of the amount for next year. And the final thing is, it was curious to me where fuel in the town budget went up when my prices for fuel are going down, both at the town garage and at the town office and at home. I'm spending less for fuel, but it went up by quite a few thousand dollars. Anyway, those are just thoughts, and if anybody wants to ask questions, please do.
Before I, is there anybody who hasn't spoken under other business who would like a chance? Yes?
Pete, I'm all, relative to the coal and oil, well, I recognize that that was the end of the minute, but I would suggest now to start forward the results of that vote to the Secretary of State.
All right, so what Pete has suggested is that the vote on, in favor of telling the state of Vermont to divest from coal and fossil fuels is going into our town minutes, and Pete is suggesting that we direct the Select Board to forward that information to the Secretary of State. Is that correct? I get that right?
Town clerk or board?
Oh, town clerk, that the town.
Every one of us.
Or each and every one of us? Do you, is that a motion, or is that? A suggestion? All right, and it's a suggestion for all of us? The suggestion was Secretary of State, would, you want to add the treasurer to that as well?
Of course.
Yeah, yes, was that a yes? Yes, the Secretary of State and the treasurer. Yes, okay, go ahead.
Okay, here I am again, but this doesn't have anything to do with the Planning Commission, it has to do with New Fane and New. We had a brief meeting yesterday evening and wanted to announce that the Four Columns and New Fane and New will be putting on a co-event on the evening of May 29. We don't have details yet because it's a brand-new idea, but it will be on the Four Columns property under a gray big tent. We'll have entertainment and food and a minimum cost. So please come.
Any other announcements?
If anyone in a celebratory mood needs an excuse to drink on Fridays, Vermont's 220th birthday.
So we're, and Tom's buying. Yeah, Bud?
Speaking about planning caused me to want to mention that there are two really horrible examples of awful planning that could go into effect up on Route 89, and one is at Exit 1, being sponsored by Mr. Milne, who went for governor last election. The other is sponsored by Mr. Sammis at Extra 4, with apparently the support of our current Governor Shumlin. I would ask you, you might just look into these, this is the worst kind of planning for Vermont and goes against the dictum that you're trying to promote of village centers and, you know, working landscape around them. So anyway, I just bring it up, I've written about it, I know Bill has some interest in it, and if this, if these things get Act 250 permits, basically it'll throw out the concept that has been a strong proponent in Vermont planning ever since I've moved here.
So if people have more questions, I'm sure Bud or Bill could answer them. Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
I just wanted to do this before I saw Michael leave, and that is, many of you don't know or haven't met your town's animal control officer. He is absolutely an amazing animal control officer, and I just wanted, before he leaves, to have him stand up and give a wave, because he is doing our town a great service. Michael, please raise your hand.
Thank you. We can keep talking? Is there a second? There's a second? There's, so, all those in favor of adjournment, please indicate so by saying "aye."
Aye!
And those opposed? Thank you very much.